Good evening. My name is Noreen Smith and I'm the Charlton Town Moderator. I hereby call our special town meeting to order. Thank you all for coming this evening to discuss and debate the issues before us. I'd like to specifically thank Town Resident Cedric Flowers for serving as our town crier out in front of the meeting tonight.[32.02][32.02](APPLAUSE). He brought a little cheer to the town meeting and maybe that's the reason we had such a great turnout, so thank you all for being here. Before we conduct our business, please rise, remove your hats, and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. And then I will ask that you please remain standing after the pledge for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. As we just celebrated Veterans Day, please join me in a moment of silence in thoughtful remembrance of those veterans who have faithfully served our country and defended our freedoms.[82.86][82.86](APPLAUSE). Our next order of business is to review the procedures and protocols for town meeting. First, I will introduce the stage. So on my left, we have our Finance Committee members and our town finance director, our town clerk, our town council, town administrator, and Board of Selectmen. Non-voters are asked to be seated and remain seated in the front, left-hand, to my left, your right, side of the auditorium. Tonight, we welcome several students from Shepherd Hill High School who are here to observe town meeting as they prepare to become voters, so we're thrilled you're here. I'd also like to recognize our state representative, Peter Durant, who's joined us this evening as a non-voter. Pleased to have you. In the event of an emergency, please exit the auditorium carefully. There are several points of egress in the back and in the front. Please be respectful of those around you during the meeting. I encourage you to wear your mask during the meeting and provide adequate space, if possible, between you and other voters. I know this is a difficult time and we had a tremendous turnout tonight, so for those of you that are standing, please come and be seated in the auditorium. All registered voters, per our town bylaws, must remain seated with no side conversations during the meeting. All discussions must be directed through me, the moderator. When considering action on an article, I will call for a motion and a second, and then any discussion on the matter. At that time, if you're interested in participating in the discussion, you'll come to the microphone and stand in line, and I will offer you three minutes to state your opinions and input relative to the article that we're discussing at that time. We will limit our questions and discussion to the matter of business as defined by each article, and we will not go outside of the four corners of the article, is how they say it. We will avoid all matters of personality. Every voter should have an electronic voting device with you that you picked up at registration. Please do not take it home with you; it won't work as your clicker for your TV.[242.12][242.12](LAUGHTER). So please turn it in at the end of the meeting, or if you have to leave before the meeting is over, please remember to turn that in where you checked in at the beginning of the meeting. So when the vote is called on each item, your device will be activated. You press red for no, green for yes. Pretty simple. You can press multiple times, so if you press the wrong button at the beginning of the voting period, and I'll give you, you know, how many seconds do we have? Thirty seconds total to vote. The last time you press the button is the vote that gets registered. So if you accidentally hit no and you said, "Oh, I meant to hit yes," it will register the yes if you press the yes as your last vote. All right, we're going to test this with a little question to practice with our devices, make sure they're working properly, and also get a count of voters in the room at this time. So the test question, "Are you hoping for a winter with no snow?" Voting is open, so please press green for yes if you want no snow, red for no if you're hoping for a big storm.[310.13][310.13](MUTTERING). Thank you.[312.13][312.13](LAUGHTER). So it's counting down.[314.13][314.13](MUTTERING). Gives us 30 seconds to take a deep breath. Fifteen seconds remaining. And we're pretty well split here in town. One hundred and forty-seven people voted yes, you would like a winter with no snow, but one hundred and seventy-five would like a big storm, so...[362.13][362.13](LAUGHTER). That's great, thank you. Forty-seven, one seventy-five, plus twelve.
Can you count any abstaining votes?
It's not, no.
It won't count an abstention. You were abstaining on that question?
I wasn't.[385.81][385.81](LAUGHTER). I was just testing to see if it actually worked.
Yep, no, red for no, green for yes. Yep. Twelve, seventeen, nineteen, twenty, twelve. Okay, good turnout, three twenty-two. Yeah, all right, great. Okay, and finally, under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 39, Section 17, I have to warn you that if you fail to comply with our established meeting protocols, you will be warned once and then removed if necessary. I will now share with you the return of the warrant. To either of the constables of the town of Charlton, in the county of Worcester, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, who are hereby directed to notify the inhabitants of the town of Charlton qualified to vote in elections to meet in the Charlton Middle School at 2 Oxford Road in Charlton, Massachusetts on Monday, November 15th at 7:00 in the evening for the purpose of taking action on the following articles. Article 1, The appropriation of funds for unpaid bills of a prior fiscal year. To see if the town will vote to raise by taxation, transfer, or borrow and appropriate a sum or sums to accounts to be specified at the town meeting for payment of one or more prior fiscal year bills not paid due to an insufficiency of appropriation or for other reasons, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. Do I have a motion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Barowski.
I move that the following prior year bills previously paid due to insufficiency of appropriation or late billing be paid from the following fiscal year '22 accounts as printed below.
And would you please read generally? Yes, please, for the record to be read in. Thank you.
Unpaid bill Clifford &amp; Kenny LLP for legal services amount $5,692.50 from 0100-151-5781-OT. Fiscal year '22 special counsel Clifford &amp; Kenny LLC Legal Services $1,500. 0100-151-5781-OT Fiscal Year '22 Special Counsel. MPC Services Air Conditioning Repairs $1,705.72. 0100-192-5240-OT Fiscal Year '22 Municipal Building Repair. Dennis K Burke Gasoline $1,872.80. 0100-199-5780-OT Fiscal Year '22 Municipal Gas and Diesel. Automated Business Solutions Printer Usage Q4 $888.37. 0100-192-5780-OT Fiscal Year '22 Municipal Building Expense. Masterman's LLP for Supplies $35.56. 0100-422-5780-OT Fiscal Year '22 DPW Expense.
Thank you, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. All right, may I please have the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee supports this motion.
Thank you. May I please have the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Any discussion? If anyone would like to speak, you can approach one of the microphones to indicate your interest. All right, as indicated on the warrant, this particular motion requires the nine tenths of the voters present to pass. No questions, no discussion, hearing none. I will ask you to vote in favor. Press green if you are in favor of the motion. If you're opposed to the motion, press red. Eight seconds left. Okay, we have 321 in the affirmative and 22 in the negative. So the motion carries. On the next page of the warrant, I would like to highlight, there is a box that has the title Balances of Funds for Appropriation. This is for your information only. It was provided by our finance director to give you the current balance of some of the funds in our budget, and then what the balance would be if all of the items that we're considering tonight at town meeting are passed and approved. So this is just strictly for information, we are not voting on that box of information on the balances of funds for appropriations, it's for your background information only. Article 2, Inter-intra-departmental Transfers and/or Appropriations for the FY 2022 Budget. To see if the town will vote to raise by taxation, borrow, or transfer and appropriate from available funds, including so-called free cash and/or funds previously appropriated to other uses, a sum or sums of money to accounts and for purposes to be specified at the special town meeting, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. Do we have a motion?
Madam Moderator, the motion is, I move that the following sums be raised by taxation or transferred, whichever is indicated below, and appropriated to the following accounts for any purpose for which funds may be expended from the later accounts, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen or Town Administrator to enter into such contracts, including leases, and to take such other action as may be necessary or advisable to effectuate the purpose of the foregoing vote, each item being considered a separate appropriation. Do I have to, can I just say as printed below, or should I read it?
You don't have to read the numbers, but if you could just read from which account being transferred from the following. Yep.
The... Which one? This one?
So two...
From, yeah.
Yep.
So fiscal year 2002, OPEB Trust 0100-910-5750-0000 to free cash account. Fiscal year '22, municipal office repair maintenance 0100-192-5240-0000 to free cash account. Fiscal year 2022, BOSS contract obligation 0100-122-5790-0000, and that's to free cash account, and that's $15,000.
Thank you.
Stabilization Fund, Fund 9009, and that's to raise and appropriate. And then fiscal year '22, it's Sewer Enterprise Capital 6200-440-5800-0000 to Sewer Enterprise retained earnings fund 6200 for $50,000.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there anything to be said on this matter?
Madam Chair, this is Stephen Sage behind the mask.
Thank you, so actually, Stephen, I'm just going to interrupt you so that everybody knows the procedure, so you would come to the microphone to be recognized and say, "Madam Moderator," and I would say, "Please state your name and address," and you'll give your name and address where you live in Charlton. That demonstrates that you're a voter in town, and then I would say, "Please proceed," and then you continue. Thank you.
The other thing is to speak into the microphone close by, because if you stand back here, you can't hear me.
Thank you.
I have a question about the first item, because I hate abbreviations for things we have no idea what they might be. Can somebody give an explanation of what it is?
Yes, I've been told that's Other Post-Employment Benefit. Is that correct? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else to be said? Okay, hearing nothing. We need a majority vote. The recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee supports this motion.
Thank you, and the recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. We'll now vote on this item. If you approve the motion, press the green button. I'll say, "Thank you." And red button for no. Eight seconds remaining. Two hundred and seventy-six in the affirmative, fifty-seven in the negative. So the motion carries. Article 3, Amendment to the FY 2022 Budget. To see if the town will vote to amend the fiscal 2022 budget voted at the May 2021 annual town meeting, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. Do we have a motion?
Madam Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Singer.
I move that the town amend the fiscal '22 budget voted at the May 21 annual town meeting by increasing the amount to be allocated in the Sewer Enterprise budget from usage charge by $100,000, and increasing the amount budgeted to sewer plant operations by the same amount.
Thank you, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee supports this motion.
May I have the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Just a reminder, this is always your opportunity to ask questions or to state your opinions. Okay, hearing none. A majority vote is required. Press green to approve the motion, press red if you oppose the motion. Five seconds remaining. We have 276 votes in the affirmative, 61 votes in the negative. The motion carries. Article 4, and I would encourage any voters who are standing to please feel free to come down and take a seat, there are empty seats in the second row in the front and throughout the auditorium. Article 4, to establish a capital improvement stabilization fund. To see if the town will vote to establish a special purpose stabilization fund under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to be known as the Capital Stabilization Fund, the purpose of which is to allow the town, from time to time, by appropriation, to reserve funds to pay for engineering and design, renovation, reconstruction, or construction of town buildings, facilities, or property, and/or vehicles and equipment, including debt service, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. Do we have a motion?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town approves Article 4 as written.
Mr. Coronas, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee supports this motion.
Thank you. Recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, please?
The Board of Selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on this matter?
Madam Moderator.
Yes, sir. Please name and address.
Peter Cooper, Jr., 194 Berry Corner Road. I just have kind of a couple things trying to understand exactly what this is. First of all, do I have my understanding right? This is creating a fund, a bucket of money with nothing in it, to start, correct? This is just saying we're going to have a fund, but this isn't funding it in any way?
So this motion is one of two motions related to the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund, and Andrew, would you like to speak to that specifically?
That's correct. This article establishes the fund, there'll be an article for consideration later on in the meeting to put money into the fund.
Thank you. And then I guess my follow-up question is if we could just have kind of a brief understanding of why it's helpful, I'm assuming this is kind of breaking up our existing stabilization fund into, this is going to be stuff for capital, and the rest of the stabilization fund is for something else. If you can just kind of expand on why it's helpful to separate out money in different buckets like that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. This is sponsored by the Finance Committee, so I'd like to offer Mr. Grundalsky an opportunity to respond. Or our finance director, he's deferring to the finance director. Thank you.
Okay. So our thought process was just to split up some money for a specific purpose, to have money for capital, rather than having to go for free cash every time. We can have some money set aside for other capital improvements as needed.
Thank you. Mr. Sage?
Madam Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Stephen Sage, 41 Lincoln Point Road, Charlton. And I'm assuming that what money needs to be spent from this fund, it comes to the town body. Is that correct?
So that's my understanding. I will defer to our town administrator for a response on that.
That's affirmative, and we require a two-thirds majority vote to pull any money out of that account.
Is there anything further to be said? Okay, hearing none. A majority vote is needed. Please vote now. If you're in favor of the motion, please press the green button. Okay, we have 272 in the affirmative, 66 in the negative. The motion carries. Article 5, Miscellaneous Capital Items and Related Contracts. To see if the town will vote to raise by taxation, borrow, or transfer from available funds, including so-called free cash, and funds previously appropriated to other uses, and appropriate a sum or sums to purchase capital items and/or for service repair, improvement, architectural, construction, renovation, improvement, and/or other contracts relating to town buildings, facilities, or property, or to municipal services, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen, Chief Procurement Officer, or other appropriate town official, board, commission, or committee, to enter into such contracts or leases and to take such other action as may be necessary or advisable to effectuate the purposes of such votes, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. So we will split out these capital items, as we've begun to do at recent meetings, in order to entertain each as a separate motion. So do I have a motion relative to the first capital item?
Madam Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Singer.
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate the following amounts to the following department's respective accounts for the fiscal year '22 capital budget, to be expended for the following purposes, each item being considered a separate appropriation, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen or Chief Procurement Officer to enter into such contracts, including leases, and to take such other action as may be necessary or advisable to effectuate the purposes of the foregoing vote. Department, Fire, Station One Improvements, $100,000 from free cash.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee supports this motion.
Thank you. And a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen, please?
The Board of Selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on this matter?
Madam Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Sage.
So I don't have to get up three times. On motion one, two, and three, I would ask that somebody in those departments explain what the improvements are going to be for those amounts of money?
Thank you. So for each of the items, right now, we're discussing the motion Article 1, but in subsequent motions, I will make sure that we are covering that question.
Just two and three.
Yep, thank you. So the question is, what will the $100,000 be used for at Station One for improvements? And our fire chief is here this evening. Chief Knopf, would you care to answer that?
Fire Chief Ed Knopf, 46 Oxford Road. They're not really improvements, they're repairs. Included in that is replacement of all windows on the first floor, which are either broken or not even in the window, they've been boarded up. Also includes siding that has been ripped off, fascia that has been damaged. Also included is, let me just get my notes here, first-floor bathroom renovations, rear gutters, the exterior needs to be painted, security systems need to be installed. Also is gutters, and that about sums it up. Fresh coat of paint.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anything further to be said? Hearing none. We will vote now. If you're in favor of this motion, please press green. If you're opposed to it, please press red.[1628.01][1628.01](MUTTERING). We have 313 in the affirmative and 31 in the negative. The motion carries.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Singer.
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate the following amount to the following department's account for the fiscal year 2022 capital budget, to be expended for the following purpose, such being considered a separate appropriation, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen or Chief Procurement Officer to enter into such contracts, including leases, and to take such other action as may be necessary or advisable to effectuate the purpose of the foregoing vote. Police Department for Police Station Improvements, $200,000 from free cash.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. May I have the recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee supports this motion.
Thank you. And a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on this matter? I would like to ask for clarification on what the Police Station improvements specifically will be, and if the police chief is here this evening, he's welcome to respond to that question. Thank you very much. Good evening. Could you speak into the microphone, please? Thank you.
Most of these improvements are going to go towards the HVAC and heating system. Currently, it's about 30 years old. We've got roof leaks, excuse me, ceiling leaks because of it. The building's, obviously, because of renovations inside the building, the airflow isn't proper at this point in time, as well as some sewer pipes that are leaking. We'd like to get ahead of that. That's what that money's going to.
Thank you. So HVAC, roof leaks, sewer pipes leaking, basic repairs on the building. Thank you, sir. Is there anything else to be said on this matter? Okay, hearing none. A majority vote is needed. Please vote now. All in favor, press the green button. Those opposed, press the red. Those opposed, press the red. Five seconds remaining. 317 in the affirmative, 32 in the negative. Motion carries.
Madam Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Singer.
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate the following amount to the following department's account for the fiscal year 2022 capital budget, to be expended for the following purpose, such being considered a separate appropriation, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen or Chief Procurement Officer to enter into such contracts, including leases, and to take other such action as may be necessary or advisable to effectuate the purpose of the foregoing vote. IT, technology replacements and improvements, $100,000 from free cash.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. May I please have the recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee supports this motion.
And a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. Would you please, Administrator, explain the technology improvements that are being proposed? Thank you, Andrew.
Primarily, this is revolving funds that we've put in year after year to anticipate replacements of computers and cybersecurity updates. I know that the IT director kind of has a laundry list of things that need to be continually upgraded year after year, especially as technology gets older and needs to be improved.
Thank you. Is there anything else to be said on this matter? Hearing nothing. Please vote now. If you're in favor of the motion, press green. If you're opposed, press red. Five seconds remaining. We have 282 in the affirmative, 65 in the negative. The motion carries. Do we have an additional motion on capital items?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Singer.
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate the following amount to the following department's account for the fiscal year 2022 capital budget, to be expended for the following purpose, such being considered a separate appropriation, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen or Chief Procurement Officer to enter into such contracts, including leases, and to take such other action as may be necessary or advisable to effectuate the purpose of the foregoing vote. Police Department...
Could you please speak into the microphone? Thank you.
Police Department, cruiser replacements, three, $200,000 from free cash.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. The recommendation of the Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee supports this motion.
Thank you. And a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion to be had on this matter? Mr. Sage.
In the past 30 or so years I've been attending, we've always seemed to do two cruisers every year. Is there a reason that we're doing a third one this year?
Thank you for your question. If the police chief would like to respond to that?
Good evening again.
Good evening.
To answer your question, basically, we've got a Route 20 project that's going to start real soon that's going to require cruisers almost on a daily basis. I've got commitments to have patrol having cruisers, the school resource having a cruiser up at the school, the court officer having a cruiser, so that's the dynamics of it. When you've got six or 10 details a day, and they require cruisers, and you've got your additional staff that's working that require cruisers, that number is why it's inflated this year. But normally, it's two. Every once in a while, we do three. That's the reason.
Thank you. And could you clarify, please? These are all replacements, or are you adding to the number of cruisers?
Well, I'm going to hold on to as many as I can so that I can provide cruisers for this Route 20 project and other projects that come in. However, whenever I have surplus, I give those back to the town, and the town deems what they want to do with it, whether they want to give it to another department, or whether they want to put it up for surplus. I leave those decisions up to the town.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Sage.
Thank you. It sounds like an important reason to pass this motion.
Thank you. Is there anything else to be said on this matter? Hearing none. We'll vote now. All in favor, press the green button. Those opposed, press the red. Five seconds remaining. Thank you. We have 293 votes in the affirmative, 54 votes in the negative. The motion carries.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Singer.
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate the following amount to the following department's account for the fiscal year 2022 capital budget, to be expended for the following purpose, such being considered a separate appropriation, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen or Chief Procurement Officer to enter into such contracts, including leases, and to take other such action as may be necessary or advisable to effectuate the purpose of the foregoing vote. Highway Department, replace a dump truck, $180,000 from free cash.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the Finance Committee, please?
Finance Committee supports this motion.
Thank you. May I have the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Hearing none. A majority vote is needed. If you're in favor of this item, please press the green button. If you're opposed, please press the red. Ten seconds remaining. We have 260 in the affirmative, 79 in the negative. The motion carries. Do we have another motion relative to capital?
Madam Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Coronas.
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate the following amount to the following department's account for the FY 2022 capital budget, to be expended for the following purpose, such being considered a separate appropriation, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen or Chief Procurement Officer to enter such contracts, including leases, and take such other action that may be necessary and advisable to effectuate the purpose of the foregoing vote. And this motion is to replace, for the Highway Department, to replace the four-by-four pickup truck in the amount of $50,000 out of free cash.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee supports this motion.
Thank you. And a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Hearing none. All in favor, please vote by pressing the green button. Those opposed, press the red button. Five seconds remaining. We have 252 votes in the affirmative, 85 in the negative. The motion carries. Do we have an additional motion on capital items?
Madam Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Coronas.
I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate the following amount to the following department's account for the FY 2022 capital budget, to be expended for the following purpose, such being considered a separate appropriation, and authorize the Board of Selectmen or Chief Procurement Officer to enter such contracts, including leases, and take such other action as may be necessary or advisable to effectuate the purpose of the foregoing vote. This is for the Cemetery Department, the replacement of a pickup truck at $55,000 from free cash.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. May I please have the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee supports this motion.
Thank you. And a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote by pressing the green button. Those opposed, please press the red. Five seconds remaining. We have 261 in the affirmative, 76 votes in the negative. The motion carries. Do we have an additional capital?
We do. Madam Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate the following amount to the following department's account for the FY 2022 capital budget, to be expended for the following purpose, such being considered on a separate appropriation and authorized by the Board of Selectmen or Chief Procurement Officer to enter such contracts, including leases, and to take such other action as may be necessary or advisable to effectuate the purpose of the foregoing vote. This is from the Conservation Commission. It's Little Nugget Dam improvements in the amount of $250,000 from free cash.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee supports this motion.
Thank you. And a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Yes, Mr. Sage.
Is this a similar situation as money coming back to the town from people who live on Little Nugget Dam, or is this a dam that's owned by the town, whereas betterments were charged, people who lived on Prindle Pond, and I believe also South Charlton Reservoir?
Thank you for your question. I will ask the Town Administrator to respond.
There'll be no betterment issued related to this. It'll be straight from free cash. It's a dam owned by the town.
Thank you. The response is that it is a dam that was owned by the town, and there will be no betterment charges related to this. Yes, sir.
Phil Seer, 224 Partridge Hill Road.
Thank you, Mr. Seer.
How is that different, sir, than the dams on Prindle Pond in South Charlton?
So, just to be clear, you have to direct by law all of your questions to the moderator, and I will happily pitch it to...
My apologies.
Thank you. Town Administrator, would you care to respond?
The situation, I'm sorry, I can't speak to the prior votes that were taken related to those, but I believe that it was specifically to the manner in which it was passed at town meeting. We've just decided to take a different approach to this one.
Madam Moderator.
Yes, sir.
So, would the residents of Prindle and South Charlton then be able to come back to town meeting and request that we get a refund?
So, question is, I'm assuming, not facetious. You're wondering if the residents of the other waterways would be able to come back and get a refund on their expenses.
Those were not owned by the town. The work was conducted by the town, though.
So, those are situations that were not owned by the town, while the work was completed by the town?
Madam Moderator.
Yes, sir.
The South Charlton Reservoir Dam is clearly owned by the town.
So, the question is, South Charlton Reservoir Dam, is it owned by the town or not? Do we have a clear statement on that?
I don't have a statement provided.
Okay. Yes, ma'am? Are you a town resident?
I am the Conservation Director.
Conservation Director. Are you a resident of Charlton?
No.
Okay. We would need a motion to allow you to speak.
Madam Moderator, I would make a motion to allow our Town Conservation Commission woman to speak.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. It requires a majority of voters present to, we'll do a voice vote, to allow the Conservation Director to speak. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion carries. Please, please address the town meeting and introduce yourself, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Angela Panashone. I'm the Conservation Director for the town. South Charlton Reservoir Dam is owned by the town, so you are correct. But, one of the, well, two major differences between Little Nugget and South Charlton Reservoir is Little Nugget is only 12.86 acres. South Charlton Reservoir is 207 acres. Little Nugget also has only 27 home residents, many of which are seasonal rental properties. South Charlton Reservoir has over 200 home residents. I'm not sure why it was done with a betterment in the past, but if the Little Nugget residents had to pay a betterment, it would be exorbitant in numbers, and the reason why we are pursuing the improvements is because in 2018, it was classified as a significant hazard, immediate-sized dam, and then the town did an emergency action plan. So, if the dam does fail, and right now, the low-level spigot is leaking, Nugget Drive, Stafford Street, and the Mass Pike would all be in serious jeopardy, as well as over 70 properties and the Charlton Manor Nursing Home.
Thank you for that information. Mr. Sears.
Thank you. I would just like to state, and I'll sit down after this, that the size of the Little Nugget Dam relative to the South Charlton Reservoir Dam is significantly smaller. The South Charlton Reservoir Dam has been classified as a high-hazard dam, given its size and the amount of water that's behind it. And if it failed, there would be significant destruction downstream of it. So, I'll leave it at that, but we might, we might come further to this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else to be said on this matter? I appreciate the input from Conservation Commission and also the town residents.
Madam Moderator, if I may make one comment?
Mr. Coronas.
These, this $250,000 is an appropriation, not to exceed. It's tip, very typical that it comes back at 50 to 75 percent of that number, once the actual bids are sent out and come back. So, it's, we're not, we're not voting to spend $250,000. We're not, it's a not-to-exceed number.
Well, thank you for that. I would just add that should the price rise to 250, we would be voting to allocate the 250.
Yes.
Up to 250.
It could be.
Thank you. Is there anything else to be said? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please press the green button. All those opposed, press the red. A majority is required. Ten seconds remaining. We have 233 in the affirmative, 107 in the negative. The motion carries. Before we proceed, I would invite again voters who are standing in the back. There are seats even along the aisle. That would be very easy to come and take, so please feel free to take a seat in the meeting hall. All right, do we have another motion relative to capital items?
Excuse me, yes, we do, Madam Moderator.
Mr. Coronas.
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate the following amount to the following department's account for the FY...
Can you please speak into the microphone? Thank you.
Am I going to start all over again?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry.
People can't hear you.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate the following amount to the following department's account for the FY 2022 capital budget, to be expended for the following purpose, such being considered on a separate appropriation and authorized for the following purpose, such being considered on a separate appropriation and to authorize the board of selectmen or chief procurement officer to enter such contracts, including leases, and take other action as may be necessary or advisable to effectuate the purpose of the following vote. This, this request is from the fire department to replace turnout gear, which is what is, what they wear when they, obviously, when they...
You can just read the motion, please. Thank you.
And it's $10,000 from free, from free cash.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Recommendation from the finance committee, please.
Finance committee supports this motion.
Thank you. And a recommendation from the board of selectmen.
The board of selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Hearing none. Please vote. If you're in favor of the motion, press the green button. If you're opposed, please press the red button. We have 318 votes in the affirmative, 26 votes in the negative. The motion carries. Article 6, to replace tanker 2, this is a borrowing article, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $425,000 for the purpose of replacing tanker 2 and for all other costs incidental and related thereto, to determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise provided, or to take any action relative thereto or thereon. Do we have a motion?
Madam Moderator, I move...
Ms. Zerowski, yes.
I move that the town appropriates $425,000 to pay costs of replacing tanker 2 and for the payment of all other costs incidental and related therefore, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to GLC 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with GLC 44, Section 20, thereby reducing an amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by the like amount, or to take any action relative therefore or thereon.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the finance committee, please?
Finance committee supports this motion.
And may I have a recommendation of the board of selectmen, please?
The board of selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. This motion does require a two-thirds vote. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Chief Knopf.
Good evening again. This is to replace a 1997 tanker, which is currently out of service due to unrepairable items such as the pump. This is also an... This is also a vehicle that incurred some mold issues at station 2, and it is no longer operable. And that's it. Thank you.
Can... Did I hear correctly? Did you say 1977 or 19...
1997.
97, thank you.
Typical trucks have 25-year lifespans, according to NFPA, which is the standard that fire service uses.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else to be said on this matter? Mr. Sage?
This is directed to you through, to the chief. Will that truck be housed in a different location from where the truck currently is creating mold or having mold issues?
Thank you. So, it was noted there is mold at station 2, and the question is, will that new truck remain at station 2? Would you care to respond, chief?
I can respond, but I believe that's more towards these individuals here. Yes, I have a mold problem at station 2, and it needs to be remedied, and that's where I leave it.
So, in response to the question being posed, is the intention to store the truck at station 2?
The intention is to store it where it'll be most appropriately used. We haven't come to that decision yet. Obviously, there are talks in the works right now to remedy the station 2 issue.
Thank you. Is there anything else to be said? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please vote with the, in the affirmative with the green button. Those opposed, please press the red button. So, we have 298 in the affirmative and 57 in the negative. I'm going to have to do the math. So, 57 out of 355. Yep. So, we have the two-thirds needed. The motion carries. 16% in the negative. Thank you. Article 7, to cap the Old Town landfill, a borrowing article, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $2 million for the purpose of capping the Old Town landfill and for all other costs incidental and related thereto, to determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise provided, or to take any action relative thereto or thereon. Do we have a motion?
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Singer?
I move that the town appropriates $2 million to pay the costs of capping the Old Town landfill and for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to general laws, Chapter 44, Section 8, parentheses, 23, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of the costs approved by this vote in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount, or to take any action relative thereto or thereon.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee supports this motion.
Thank you. And the recommendation from the board of selectmen.
The board of selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. This motion requires a two-thirds vote. Is there anything to be said on this matter?
Madam Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Robert Hartwig, 2 Freeman Road.
Thank you, Mr. Hartwig.
If memory serves, the landfill was capped at some point in the past, so does this mean that that capping has failed or needs to be repaired, or am I just wrong about that?
Thank you, Mr. Hartwig. I thought the same myself. I, I will pitch that question to our town administrator for a response, please.
There are two town landfills on Flint Road. The town did take action to cap the newer of the two town landfills. The older landfill, though...
Can you speak into the...
Sorry. The older landfill was never capped or part of that process, and now is receiving additional scrutiny under DEP to take action.
Thank you. Is there anything else to be said on this matter? Hearing none. All those in favor of this article, please vote by pressing the green button. So, it's 236 in the affirmative, 108 in the negative. Hold on one moment while I just calculate the total. So, we would have needed 114 votes to, in the negative, so the motion carries. Article 8, to transfer to and from stabilization funds, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate a sum or sums to or from the stabilization fund, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Moderator. I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate the following sums to and from the following accounts and funds. Item number 1, capital stabilization fund, the amount of $250,000 to the stabilization fund, and the purpose to fund stabilization according to the reserve policy. Item number 2, sewer stabilization fund, in the amount of $475,000 from the sewer retained earnings fund for future, future capital projects.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the finance committee, please?
Finance committee supports this motion.
Thank you. May I have a recommendation from the board of selectmen?
The board of selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. This also requires a two-thirds vote. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please vote in the affirmative with the green button. Those opposed, please press the red button. Thank you. Article 9, to rescind Charlton Dam bond authorization, to see if the town will vote to rescind unissued borrowing authorization of $72,000 for the South Charlton Dam project, voted under Article 19 of the May 21, 2018 annual town meeting, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Moderator?
Yes. Mr. Browski.
I move that the town approve Article 9 as written.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee supports this motion.
Thank you. And a recommendation from the board of selectmen.
The board of selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. This requires a two-thirds vote. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote by pressing the green button. 5 seconds remaining. We have 315 votes in the affirmative, 30 in the negative. The motion carries. Article 10, a special act to remove police department positions from civil service, to see if the town will vote to a) authorize the board of selectmen to petition the general court for a special act, reading as follows. Section 1, notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary, all police officers, regardless of rank, in the Town of Charlton Police Department shall be exempt from the provisions of Chapter 31 of the general laws. And Section 2, Section 1 of this act shall not impair the civil service status of any person employed on a permanent basis as a police officer, regardless of rank, to the Town of Charlton Police Department on the effective date of this act. Section 3, this act shall take effect upon its passage. to authorize the general court to make clerical and editorial changes of form only to the bill, unless the board of selectmen approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the general court, and the board of selectmen shall be authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition. And b) to further authorize the board of selectmen to take any and all other action necessary or advisable to remove all police officers, regardless of rank, in the Town of Charlton Police Department from civil service, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. Do we have a motion relative to Article 10?
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Zerowski.
I move that the town approves Article 10 as written.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the finance committee? No recommendation of the finance committee offered. Forgive me. Recommendation from the board of selectmen?
The board of selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. A majority vote is needed. Is there anything to be said on this matter? Yes, Mr. Sage?
So, so why is this an advantage for us?
Thank you. Is the police chief present? I'd like to ask the police chief to respond to that. Thank you. Good evening.
By the end of tonight, I'll be a professional orator at this point.
Yeah, please.
It really, it really doesn't impact us negatively at all. The union's behind this. They, they would like to leave civil service. I have no issues with them leaving civil service. It tends to be the trend right now. People are getting out of civil service. The benefits are, it makes hiring and promoting easier, because we don't have to go through an archaic method utilizing civil service.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on this matter? If you could stay there, Police Chief, that might be helpful. Thank you. Yes, sir. Would you introduce yourself and state your name and address, please?
Kevin Hunt, 27 Starbridge Road.
Thank you.
I was just wondering if there's a reason that the finance committee did not have a recommendation on this?
Yes, typically, the finance committee, because there's no allocation of monies involved, would not weigh in on the, the item.
Thank you.
That was, I was on a roll, so, you know, my mistake. Thank you. Yes, sir. Would you please introduce yourself? Name and address.
Mike Mitchell, 194 Berlin Game Road.
Thank you.
I'm not exactly sure what are the, what are the consequences of this? I'm not really sure what this means, removing the police from civil service. If you could explain in more detail exactly what that means and what the consequences are.
Thank you. So, what was stated earlier was that the police union is also in support of this, and that it makes it easier for hiring and promotions and undoes some archaic, you know, systems that come along with civil service. Is there anything additional to be added to that?
Civil service, the state is getting rid of civil service just for attrition. There's fewer employees there. We're only able to test, we're only able to take, take a written exam once a year. I could have somebody take the exam, nobody passes. That's why a lot of times, as the law has changed and both, basically, all the rights that civil service afforded employees previously has now been incorporated into laws, I can't just fire somebody for no reason, which is normally what civil service used to protect, you know, wrongful terminations and discipline. There's, there's things in place. The offices feel with the changes and, that are, have taken place, that they feel safe and comfortable doing this. I'm able to look at agencies to look for lateral transfers, which were previously referred to as lateral transfers. I'm able to look it up from towns that are neighboring towns that aren't civil service. I can now hire them. I wasn't able to hire them because they weren't civil service before. So, it opens up the applicant pool. It puts the, as far as the testing in, in the town's hands, they can have tests more often. They can, they can change... hands, they can have tests more often, they can, they can change things, they can look for different qualities that they're looking for in the town. I can't do that with the civil services. It's a standard test throughout the state. It has its merits, but it's difficult having only a test once a year, and the fail rate was terrible. I, some departments have had no people pass. I can only look at the top candidates, the, the seventh or eighth candidate might be wonderful, or he or she, but I can't hire that person because I have to go by a list which civil service dictates, which just gives the town more options, in my opinion.
Thank you for that explanation. Is there anything further to be said on this matter? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please vote with the green button in the affirmative. Those opposed, please press the red button. We have 307 votes in the affirmative, 52 votes in the negative. A majority vote was needed. The motion carries. We're doing really well here. So Article 11, I, I'm thinking that's why you're here. So I do just want to highlight that there is also an Article 12. And so, given the number of people in the room who may have come with an interest in Article 11, I would ask that you please remain with us. Look how quickly we're doing this. Article 12 is a single item. If we could stay in the room while we vote on Article 12 at the end of the meeting, I would appreciate it, so that we don't have too much disruption and the meeting can be concluded. All right, Article 11. Tax increment financing agreement with amazon.com Inc. To see if the town will vote pursuant to general law, Chapter 40, Section 59, and general law, Chapter 23A, Section 3E and 3F, and applicable regulations thereunder. A, to approve the proposed tax increment financing agreement between amazon.com Inc. and the Town of Charlton substantially in the form as such is on file and available for review at the Town Clerk's Office, also called the TIF agreement, for improvements to the property located at 53 Sturbridge Road in Charlton, Massachusetts, that will consist of 104.5 acres, more or less, currently designated on the Charlton Board of Assessors map as part of tax parcel MAP 27, parcel D1, MAP 33, parcel A2, MAP 33, parcel A3, and MAP 33, parcel A4, as described more fully in the proposed TIF agreement, the project, which TIF agreement would provide for real estate tax exemptions at the exemption rate schedule set forth therein. And B, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to, one, enter into the TIF agreement on behalf of the town; two, execute the agreement and any documents relating thereto; three, approve and arrange for submission of the TIF agreement and Economic Development Incentive Program, EDIP, local incentive-only application, and any associated documents, all relating to the project, to the Massachusetts Economic Assistance Coordinating Council, the EACC. And four, to take such other and further action as may be necessary or appropriate to obtain EACC approval, implement these documents, and carry out the purposes of this article. Do we have a motion relative to the TIF?
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Singer?
I move that the town approve Article 11 as follows. Pursuant to general laws, Chapter 40, Section 59, and general laws, Chapter 23A, subsection 3E and 3F, and applicable regulations thereunder. A, to approve the proposed tax increment financing TIF agreement between amazon.com Services LLC, USRE Patriot LLC, and the Town of Charlton substantially in the form as such is on file and available for review at the Town Clerk's Office, parentheses, the TIF agreement, for improvements to the property located at 53 Sturbridge Road, Charlton, Mass, that will consist of approximately 104.5 acres currently designated on the Charlton Board of Assessors map as part of tax parcel MAP 27, parcel D1, tax parcel MAP 33, parcel A2, tax parcel MAP 33, parcel A3, and tax parcel MAP 33, parcel A4, as described more fully in the proposed TIF agreement, parentheses, the project, which TIF agreement would provide for real estate tax exemptions at the exemption rate schedule set forth therein. And B, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to, one, enter into the TIF agreement on behalf of the town; two, execute the agreement and any documents relating thereto; three, approve and arrange for submission of, execute the agreement of any documents related thereto; three, I've read that already, approve and arrange for submission of the TIF agreement and Economic Development Incentive Program, EDIP, local incentive-only application, and any associated documents, all relating to the project, to the Massachusetts Economic Assistance Coordinating Council, EACC. And four, take such other and further action as may be necessary or appropriate to obtain EACC approval, implement these documents, and carry out the purposes of this article.
Thank you. So we have a motion, which, just to make sure we're, we're correct in the language, the motion was as presented in the warrant. So just a little blip in the language there, we're accommodating that the motion you presented was as written in the warrant. Thank you. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the Finance Committee on this motion, please?
Finance Committee supports this motion.
Thank you. And a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen on the motion?
The Board of Selectmen supports this motion.
Thank you. There is a majority vote needed, and I'd like to highlight that the motion should have been presented in bold on your warrant, so that paragraph should have been in bold type. And the square box that's presented after the motion is strictly for information purposes only. That is not specifically what you are voting on. So I just want to make sure there's no confusion among the voters, that what you're voting on is the motion as presented. And then that square box with information in it is for background information only. We're not debating what's in the square box. We've provided that for background information only. Mr. Corones?
Yes, when, are we at?
Yes, if there's anything to be said on this matter, now is the time. So if you're interested in speaking, I would invite people to line up for the microphones. And just also, if we do have multiple speakers and you're concerned about safety, I brought my own box of Clorox wipes here, you can wipe down the microphone before you speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Steve Corones, 17 old, Worcester Road Extension. I'd like to nominate that we have, we allow three minutes for each speaker. We have two speakers here tonight, one, Alex Eskamelia from Blue Water Group, and we have Brad Griggs from Amazon. If we would allow them each three minutes to speak with questions and answers later, I think it would be very valuable to the, to the people here.
So you have a motion to have two non-voters address the meeting, the first being Alex Eskamelia from?
From, from the Blue Water Group.
Blue Water Group. And the second?
Brad Griggs, Brad, Brad Griggs is from Amazon, Vice President of Development.
And Brad Griggs, the Vice President of Development of Amazon.
Yes.
We have a motion to have two non-voters address the group. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. That requires a majority vote. We'll do it by voice vote. All in favor of allowing Mr. Eskamelia and Mr. Griggs to address the meeting, please signify by saying aye?
Aye!
Anyone opposed, please say nay.
Nay!
Okay, the majority has it. The ayes have it. I would invite Mr. Eskamelia, or Ms., Ms. Eskamelia and Mr. Griggs.
Hate to disappoint, I'm not Mr. Eskamelia.
That's okay. You would each have, you will each have, excuse me, three minutes to speak, and please contain your remarks to that three-minute time period. Thank you.
Thank you, Moderator, and thank you to the board and to the townspeople. My name is Alex Eskamelia.
You'll need to speak closely into the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you to all. My name is Alex Eskamelia. I'm with Blue Water Property Group. I'm the lead developer on the project, together here with our partner Bay Colony and our prospective tenant, Amazon. We're pleased to be here tonight and present the TIF and potential community partnership agreement outlined in warrant Article 11. As many of you know, the project is proposed at 53 Sturbridge Road, located on Route 20, a location that has long been slated as a great opportunity for economic development in the Town of Charlton. The proposed project is a first-mile fulfillment and sortation facility, and one of the highest tech buildings in the Amazon logistics network. The project team has been studying feasibility since 2020, and has worked tirelessly with local and state jurisdictions to fine-tune engineering, review impacts, and improve or mitigate across every discipline. After successful zone change in May, the project team has complied with a rigorous federal, state, and local review. We have now secured the local land use approvals that reflect the objectives and concerns of this community. Tonight, we're pleased to be here to talk about the significant financial benefits that the town will receive if the proposed warrant article is passed. What is proposed is a combined 10-year TIF and community partnership agreement that results in substantial revenue for the town. The TIF is simply a 10-year tax schedule that outlines progressively increasing taxes paid by the owner, and is designed to offset the massive real estate and capital investment over $215 million in real estate, and another $100 million in personal property over the initial occupancy period. In addition to this real estate investment, as I mentioned, the owner will be making investment in personal property, which will be subject to the standard taxation and depreciation schedule. If the TIF is adopted, this first year of payment is estimated at $2.8 million, which is meaningful contribution, given the laundry list of items we've just been here to listen to. And this is a contribution to the overall Charlton budget of just under $30 million. We've passed out some information session, or information and frequently asked questions that illustrate some of these impacts. This, this, over a 20-year period, the average conservative annual payment is $3.2 million a year. That is a total tax revenue over 22, over 20 years of $65.5 million, just in revenue, compared to the $10,000 a year generated by this property. So we're comparing 2.8 to 3.2 on average, a year, compared to $10,000 a year. That is what is proposed. This project is near three times revenue for Charlton than its next highest commercial taxpayer, that is also under a pilot agreement for the town. If accepted, this income would have significant impact to the town over 20 years, while helping to make the business case for a standalone project in a location where it's very expensive to build and operate a facility of this magnitude.
Thank you. Can you wrap up your remarks, please?
Yep. There will be an 18-month construction project that will also create good-paying jobs. These jobs will come from local, regional, and national sources. We'll be working with general contractors who have experience in this region, and will have detailed safety protocols, local hiring practices, and compliance teams.
Thank you.
I would like to turn it over to Brad.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Griggs. I am lead our economic development practice for Amazon in the Northeast. Thank you, Ms. Moderator, and the town here this evening for your consideration. The majority of what I'm going to discuss is on the back of the flyer with the chart that says, "How does this compare?", and then in the middle says, "Additional town benefits." So this facility is the most advanced type of facility in the Amazon network. It has, should it move forward, and this consideration this evening is a key component for our leadership to consider moving forward with this project. It will employ 1,000 full-time jobs at this facility. 900 of those will have a starting hourly wage of at least $18 an hour, with comprehensive benefits, the same that I have, starting day one. Medical, dental, vision, 401K, for those hourly employees starting day one. There will be 100 managerial positions at least, at $60,000 a year, again with comprehensive benefits, starting day one. As Alex mentioned, this project will invest over 100, hundreds of millions of dollars, resulting in a $1.5 million permit fee, in addition to the tax revenues that Alex mentioned. We're also talking about a community partnership agreement that, if the TIF moves forward and is approved this evening, will provide $10 million in additional community benefits for this project. $5.3 million, which will go into roadway improvements along Route 20 and Route 169, which would include high-tech cameras to help with traffic flow and improve any congestion. $1.5 million in sidewalk and streetscape improvements, predominantly around Town Hall. An additional $1.5 million in STEM education going into the Charlton School Districts. $750,000 in recreation improvements, and to build an arts and activity band shell. And $780,000 in public safety, in addition to the fire equipment mentioned earlier. This would be additional fire and public safety herein. The last thing I want to mention is, beyond the community partnership agreement discussed, should the project move forward, there would also be a $400,000 community contribution to the Cape and Hill facilities, to help improve that site, as well as to sponsor the annual summer camps that that facility has. So I just thank you again for your consideration for the proposed project.
Thank you. Just to be clear, for the discussion purposes, we've, we've heard background information, and that information is also included in the warrant package for your background information. We're specifically speaking now, and you're specifically voting, not on approval of the project, but approval of the TIF. And so comments related to the TIF are now invited, and to the motion at hand.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Saper, would you please introduce yourself and state your, if you can raise that, that would be great. It seems to be too low for a lot of folks.
I might applaud you if you did.
Thank you.
Not happening. All right. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Charlton Economic Development Commission, of which I chair. We would like to inform the residents that we are in support of this article for the significant economic development improvements that it will provide for the town.
Thank you. Is there anything else to be said on this matter? Again, we're discussing the TIF.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, ma'am, would you please speak up and say your name and address, please?
Nancy McInnany, 43 Gale Road.
Thank you.
I don't know if this can be answered, I just didn't know if there was any imminent domain that's going to be taken to get Route 20 to be wider, based on how much traffic is going to be involved? I'm not sure if that can be answered at this point.
So that, that is technically not part of the discussion this evening? Tonight, we're focused on the TIF. Questions related to Route 20 improvements will have to be handled outside of this meeting?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Madam Moderator? Alita Roar, 194 Berlin Game Road.
Thank you.
Knowing, knowing about Amazon, their monopoly, how terribly they treat their staff and employment, I would like to direct this, I'm trying to understand how. Knowing that Amazon is probably the most corrupt monopoly.
So if we could, please.
Hang on right now.
No, excuse me, this is not your meeting, this is my meeting to moderate.
I understand.
So if you could keep your comments to the TIF.
I'm, I'm trying to, because...
You'll be out of order if you don't keep your comments to the TIF. Thank you.
Why have we considered Amazon? Were, are there not other American companies with products made in America?
Okay, thank you, ma'am. So we are not able to address the ownership issue at this meeting. This is, this conversation for tonight, you know, is restricted to the TIF, as described in Article 11. And that is what we're discussing tonight. That is what the voters here this evening have the opportunity to weigh in on, express your opinions on the TIF, and ultimately vote on. So is there anything else to be said on the matter of the TIF agreement? Yes, ma'am, please state your name and address.
Joanne Williamson, 13 Horn Homestead Road.
Thank you.
My question is, if we approve this TIF, does this mean this project goes forward no matter what other concerns residents might have?
So that's a well-stated question. Thank you for that. So that's a well-stated question. Thank you for that. I will ask the town administrator to offer your version of a response, and then I will, I may call on the planning board relative to their approvals. But do you have anything you'd like to add in response to that first?
I'll just add that all current, all relative approvals for town, sorry. All approvals related to the town boards and committees have been issued already. So from a town perspective, there are no additional hurdles to clear.
Thank you. And so, thank you. I can repeat the... I will repeat what was stated, which is that all other town approvals have already been obtained in various committee meetings and as necessary for the project to go forward. This evening, we're discussing specifically the TIF. Yes, Mr. Lemansky?
Madam Moderator, through you, Robert Lemansky, 157 Sunset Drive.
Thank you.
I'd like to offer an amendment to the Article 11. The amendment would be adding 3.1 to the motion that Mr. Singer had stated. And the addition would be, two-thirds of all tax monies received shall be used to reduce the general tax rate.
Mr. Lemansky, would you please put your amendment in writing?
I have it right here.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll repeat that again. The amendment is that when Mr. Singer had gone through the, his motion, there was article, there was sections 1, 2, 3, and 4. This would be 3.1. Two-thirds of all tax monies received shall be used to reduce the general tax rate.
I'll take that in. So if you'd please remain silent while we consult with counsel. Thank you. All right. So just to clarify, the proposed amendment to the article, in our opinion, my opinion as moderator and legal counsel opinion, may not be legal. Therefore, we will proceed to see if there is a second on this motion, and we will vote, if there is a second, on the amended motion. However, I would just advise the town meeting that if this article is in fact not legal relative to establishing a tack, impacting a general tax rate as part of this article, that if it is approved, and then the article itself, once amended, is approved, it may render that article illegal, and therefore, the vote for the larger article would be nullified in the courts. So it's an advisory that this may not be a legal motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would welcome any changes that town council think, thinks that should be made, just so that the general premise is still there, but is made in a legal format.
I understand. I believe the concern is that the premise itself is not legal.
Really?
So it may not be the statement, the way in which it's stated, but that the premise itself may not be legal under this article. So we do have a motion, and Mr. Lemansky, you're maintaining your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second on this motion? There is a second. So we have a motion and a second. So our town clerk will enter the amendment, the proposed amendment to Article 11's motion. And while she's doing that, I'll just point people to the actual motion and indicate where Mr. Lemansky has suggested inserting this language. So where it says, "And to authorize the Board of Selectmen to, one, enter into the TIF agreement on behalf of the town; two, execute the agreement and any documents related there; two, and 3.1 would be that two-thirds of all tax monies received shall be used to reduce the general tax rate." And therefore, 3.2 would be to approve and arrange for submission of the TIF and Economic Development Incentive Program, and it would continue as read.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Bill Borowski, 69 Hackerty Road, speaking as an individual member of the Board of Selectmen, not, not for the board as a whole.
Could I ask you to go down and use the microphone, please? Thank you. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Borowski.
Hey, everybody. So while I applaud, excuse me, this is going to be rough.
Could you address the moderator, please?
Madam Moderator, through you.
Yes, sir.
While I applaud the concept behind the amendment, what this does is, for all intents and purposes, hamstring future town meeting voters with what tax allocations are going to go to. You heard tonight that we need improvements to the fire station. We did improvements to the police station. We all know the past few years around the public safety facilities in general, those problems have not gone away. They're not going to go away. Additionally, Charlton Middle School needs improvements. Charlton Elementary needs improvements. Our infrastructure needs improvements. What this will do is simply eliminate the possibility for, for town meeting voters to have their say on where this money were to go to in the future. While, again, I applaud the notion of it, I believe that it will limit our options, and I would recommend voting it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borowski. I would add that that is underlying the concern relative to the potential legality of the motion. But, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Would you state your name and address?
Jim Gabhart, 60 Freeman Road.
Thank you.
I just, I'm curious if we could, like, postpone this particular portion of the amendment and have an official warrant item that specifies the tax implication. Because if, I mean, if we go ahead and pass this, and then it creates a poison pill, does it kill the whole deal? And, I mean, are we basically done? So can we possibly do, do a warrant in the spring meeting or something like that that assigns the taxes, whether back to us or whatever?
So certainly, the allocation of taxes that are collected by the town is voted on annually by the town in the town budget process.
Could we have a formal, Lemansky, like, a formal warrant next, next spring that votes on how we use the tax?
Certainly, if anyone wants to have an item considered on the annual town meeting warrant, it takes, now you're testing my, my recall here. I think it's 10 voters to, 10 registered voters in the town who sign a petition to have an article included in the annual town meeting warrant can get that article up for consideration at the annual town meeting. And that would be on the warrant with advance notice, and certainly, the moderator and legal counsel would be available to weigh in to make sure that that motion was correctly stated so that when we get to the town meeting, there's not a question of, you know, legality in terms of what you're voting on. Thank you. That, yeah, he's not withdrawing. We have a motion and a second, so further discussion. Mr. Saper?
Madam Moderator.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Yes, no problem. Sorry. Could the town council speak as to why the premise is, was potentially not legal?
Certainly. So what we heard already was that it does potentially restrict additional voter privileges at future meetings, but... Mr. Cosgrove, the question is, why would this potentially be an illegal motion?
Number one.
Can you speak in?
A motion. Can you hear me? Okay. Number one, a motion of that wide, an impression or effect should be submitted well in advance of the town meeting, so there's an opportunity to research it. Number two, how it would affect the budget is very unclear. And I can't speak, I'm not speaking to the merits of the TIF, whatever the merits may be or may not be, but I know it was negotiated in the tail and that the passage of that, of such a motion, would certainly have some effect on whether that TIF would come, would be brought to fruition.
So you're describing two potential implications, one being the possible illegality of the motion, the second being potential implications for the TIF, which I believe everyone understands.
Right.
Yep.
I wish I could be clearer, but I've never heard or seen a motion like of that, that wide an effect at this stage of the game. So that's the best I can offer. It's, it's of questionable legality.
So we...
Like, I'm not saying it's illegal, but if the motion were to pass and it were, it were not legal, then everything would be up in the air, to put it bluntly.
Thank you. And I would just advise town meeting, that is, the role of town council and the town moderator to advise you when something may not pass in the mass general courts.
A follow-up to that, for the town council. So since he has never seen this before, is it fair to say that it's highly unlikely that it would be considered as legal? Would that be a fair statement?
It's, I think what's fair is that it's unknown at this point in time, because our town council, who has quite a bit of experience, has not seen a motion to...
Right. So it's, it's highly unlikely that we would be the first successful one, if that was the case, to...
I think that the fair thing that we can offer is that it's unknown.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Lemansky?
Thank you. Couple of things. First of all, on the, on the TIF, if I'm not mistaken, didn't USGen get a TIF when they came to town? Anybody recall up there?
Can you, can you say that a little louder?
USGen, when they came to town, didn't they get a TIF?
Did USGen get a TIF when they came to town? I don't... So...
I think it, because that's the only other one that possibly could exist. And as I remember, we came back to town meeting to change the, the, the direction of those funds, because a portion of those funds was then directed, I think it was either to go and help to pay for either a sewer project or help to pay for the dry line that was put in Route 20 years ago. And the point of this, of mentioning it is, it can be changed.
Yes, it can.
Just like the selectmen could, can go back to, to who they're negotiating with and say, "Look, you know, what we had assumed that we were going to collect here, our voters are saying they want two-thirds of the money to go towards, towards general taxes, period." And so what we've got to play with is the one-third.
So I understand your point, Mr. Lemansky. If I can clarify, what you're, what you're stating is that at a future town meeting, we could vote to allocate tax dollars that are collected to other items. That's correct.
Absolutely.
At this meeting, this article is not speaking directly to the allocation of those taxes. It's speaking to the tax financing agreement, the incremental rate at which taxes will be charged on the property.
Correct, but it boils down to the taxes that are collected, where the funds are going to go. So I don't think that this is out of line. But I do want to also mention this, and this is important. We have almost an identical project that's already approved, already going to happen, that's, the building is over a million square feet, which is going to pay similar amounts in taxes. So it's not as if, oh, if, if we don't catch this wave, you know, we're not going to be able to have one for another 10 or 20 years. Identical timing. It's going to happen at the same time. I think we're, again, it depends on how you feel about this project, win or lose. This does not affect the general vote of whether it's, it's going to happen or not going to happen. What it has, it affects how these funds, these anticipated funds were going to be distributed. That's what it affects. Thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Lemansky. So the article that we're voting on is relative to issuing and agreeing to a tax incremental financing plan with the developer and the owner of the property. And right now, we're debating a proposed amendment to that TIF, to the language of the motion that describes the approval of the TIF. And, do you have it up there? I got three sets of glasses up here. So, so the amendment to Article 11 that is being discussed now is that section 3.1 would read, "Two-thirds of all tax monies received shall be used to reduce the general tax rate." Is there a comment on the amendment language? Thank you, sir.
Madam Moderator, Brian Roulette, 92 Olister Road.
Thank you, Mr. Roulette.
Just some simple math and maybe a food for thought. I understand what Mr. Lemansky's trying to do, but if we reduce, seeing as how we don't have a business tax rate and just a tax rate, if we reduce that tax rate, wouldn't we also be reducing Amazon's contribution to the tax, reducing our revenues coming in over the period of this project?
So, thank you. That's an interesting point, and I will ask our finance director if she'd like to comment on that.
That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Singer?
Madam Moderator, David Singer, 2 Keely Drive. If I could ask the people here tonight, voters, residents of Charlton, to consider, council has given their opinion that it could very well be an illegal motion. If it is, then if it passes, then the entire article would then be moot. It's illegal. It's no benefit to Charlton. The fact is, even if it turned out to be legal, to Mr. Borowski's point, and we passed it, and it was legal, it just tied your hands. You are the voters. You decide where that money gets spent. So that means, in the future, if you decide to use it to fund fire station or police repairs, you have that authority. It lies with you. If you decide in the future to use that money to lower your tax rate, you have that right. It lies with you. So if it was legal, you're only tying your own hands for the future. And if it's illegal, then we're actually hurting the town for the long term. I'd ask you to consider that. Mr. Roulette was also right. He was talking about a single tax rate versus a split tax rate. A split tax rate is something we can address in the future, too, if this were to, to happen. And that would take care of that as well. So I would ask the people here to please consider voting against the amended motion and supporting the original motion for the benefit of Charlton's long-term future. There are a lot of needs in this town right now, and we can't print money. We want smart growth. We want controlled growth on Route 20. This is exactly what we've been asking for, for years. We now have this opportunity. Please take it.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. Ms. Walker, would you state your name and address?
Madam Moderator, Kathleen Walker, 96 D Baker Pond Road.
Thank you.
And I would like to move the question.
Okay, we, we're moving the question. Therefore, we're voting on this amendment. All in favor of including... Two-thirds to move the question. Hold on.
Previous question, two-thirds, not debatable. Can't interrupt.
All right. We have a motion and a second to move the question. All in favor of moving the question, in other words... I will. Thank you. All in favor of moving the question to a vote, would you say aye? Those opposed will say nay, and it requires a two-thirds majority. I will do this with an oral vote. So all those in favor of moving the question and voting on, moving forward to vote on the amendment, in other words, we're stopping debate on the amendment, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying no. Okay, thank you. We have a two-thirds majority. So we will now move the question, which is the amendment vote. So the vote is, if you're in agreement to include the language of section 3.1, to state that two-thirds of all tax monies received shall be used to reduce the general tax rate, if you agree with that statement and inclusion of that statement in the motion... if you agree with that statement and inclusion of that statement in the motion, please press the green button. If you disagree, please press the red button.
What if I am, please?
If you're voting to include this amendment in the language of the motion that we will then vote on, so in other words, do you want to incorporate this language into the motion? If you say yes, you want to incorporate it, you press the green button. If you disagree with adding this language, press the red button. There always will be, yes.
Madam Moderator.
We take them one at a time, yes, sir. Mr. Singer.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but for clarification, so this is a vote on the amendment to the motion, that to vote yes means you want to support this amendment, knowing it may or may not be illegal. Voting no opposes it. Once that is over-
So, Mr. Singer, we already voted?
Right, but then we vote on the full amended motion.
Correct, yes, I've stated that already, thank you. Okay. So it failed, that's a majority. So the amendment vote to include that language in the motion has failed. There were 55 in favor of the amendment and 289 opposed. So let's, hold your, hold your applause, please. 55 in favor, 289 opposed. Therefore, the motion remains as presented and outlined in the warrant and as previously offered. Is there anything further to be said on the main motion?
My name is Alan Chin, 315 Partridge Hill Road.
I'm sorry, could you speak up?
Alan Chin, 315 Partridge Hill Road.
Thank you.
A question to Amazon, in the brochure, it infers that if the TIF is not passed, that Amazon will not proceed with the project. Could you clarify that, is that true?
So specifically, you can't pose-
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
If the TIF is not approved-
Is the project over?
Is the project not going forward.
Okay, so that's a good question. I'm going to turn that over to our town administrator first.
I'll relay that to Amazon.
You relay that to Amazon. And so, in other words, we don't have that information available at the town level, so is a representative from Amazon present who would be willing to respond to that question? And the question is, if the TIF does not pass this evening, as outlined in Article 11 on the main motion, would Amazon not proceed with its project in Charlton?
Thank you, moderator, and thank you for your question.
Can you speak close to the microphone, please?
Thank you, Miss Moderator, and thank you for your question. So, yes, if the project as currently considered in the warrant article and as I described before, the TIF is a material factor in our decision to move forward, and but for the incentives, the project as considered would not move forward without the TIF.
So you're stating that Amazon would not go forward with the building project without this TIF?
Miss Moderator, as stated, yes.
Yes, okay, I'm just making sure the language is clear. And sir?
So a follow-up question to that, is Amazon, you know, obviously Charlton is a favorable location due to its highway locations and geographic location in, in the state.
Yes.
And our, you know, our tax rates are reasonable. So, the question really is, without the TIF, the TIF is not that much money in terms of amazon.com, in terms of the general revenue of Amazon. So you would state, so is Amazon stating categorically, without a TIF, that they can't fulfill this project?
That is correct, that's what they responded. Thank you. Is there anything else to be said on this matter? Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I've just got a question about kind of, I guess, long-term, this, this is talking about a 10-year agreement, there's projections for 20 years of revenue in here. Is there some kind of, I don't know if performance bond is the right word, but I guess what happens if five, 10 years from now, they decide, someone decides this project isn't worth it, they, they pull out or, it's hard to imagine Amazon going under, but, you know, who knows? The world's a crazy place, and who knows what the world will look like 10 to 15 years from now. Is there some guarantee, if we give this money upfront as part of this TIF, is there some way of, what, what happens if we don't get the results later on that we're expecting, I guess is the question?
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, thank you, Mr. Cooper. That's a question to the structure of the TIF, and are there any guarantees of collected revenues regardless of the success or failure of this particular business or project?
If the TIF is violated, then the TIF no longer exists, and then all that money is then issued for collection.
Can you state that again?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The, a violation of the TIF would then revert, would the, would render the TIF null and void, and then the full amount of taxation would be issued.
So that would-
For the duration.
So if the TIF is violated, then it would revert to a regular tax rate for collection on whatever property is in place at that time.
Correct.
So that, in, I believe the spirit of the question was, if Amazon went out of business in five years or relocated to another state, would we have any recourse to collect any additional revenue? And I think the answer is no. Is that correct, or is there, if they left the town?
Not additional.
Correct, there wouldn't be additional, any ongoing revenue from a project that has stopped.
Right.
Right.
Madam Moderator, if I could clarify-
Mr. Corones.
Yes, the, the question where the gentleman just stated, he said, "We're giving all this money upfront, what happens if they fail in eight years or nine years?" We're not giving them money upfront. The money is accrued annually, the tax revenue, the TIF is, we're not giving them $11 million upfront. This is, this is still over a 10-year period.
Correct. I think that, I think what was well-understood was that the tax rate would be reduced in the beginning and incrementally grow over time, and therefore, we would be providing the reduced tax rate at the beginning of the project. So I don't think there's confusion on that point unless someone has another question.
And another point to that, that's, that's only on the tax rate on the real estate and on the personal property. The community outreach part of it, a majority of that is upfront.
Correct, so as, as identified-
So we're actually getting money upfront, not them.
Thank you. So as identified in the square box on the warrant, where there's some background information provided relative to the project, it does not speak to the TIF, but it speaks to additional monies that the town would receive through a community agreement. And so that's a separate pool of money. That information is provided for you in the warrant, in the box, but what we are voting on is specifically the motion to approve or disapprove a TIF. Sir, would you wish to speak?
Don Allery, 13 Hennessy Way here in Charlton.
Mr. Allery.
Just a comment, if not here, then where? And what I mean by that is, we've got a unique opportunity here in the town. We've had many years of, you know, two-town meetings now where we can't get a safety complex done. We have many other projects that this town faces that if it's not here, then we're all going to be faced with the same situation where the burden to fund these things becomes that on the residents and our tax rates. And I just want to point that out to everybody in town today, because Amazon's going to build their warehouse. Question is, if not here, then where? And I'd much rather see it here, and let the town benefit from those TIFs that we got coming.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, could you speak your name and address into the microphone?
Diane Dougherty, 38 Hanson Road, Charlton.
Thank you, Ms. Dougherty.
I'm here on behalf of the Recreation Commission. The board supports Article 11, the TIF agreement for the proposed Amazon facility. A yes vote would mean a long-term commitment to the citizens of Charlton. Contribution benefits that not only the Recreation Commission receives, but all other town departments, would provide an opportunity for many proposed projects to become a reality. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anything else to be said on this matter?
Kevin Hunt, 27 Sterbridge Road.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
I was wondering if some clarification could be made in terms of the assessment of the valuation of the property, in terms of when the property will be reassessed as time goes on? Will it be reassessed during the construction process? Will it be reassessed once the construction is completed? And then how frequently it will be reassessed going forward into the agreement period?
Thank you for the question. Andrew, would you like to respond to that relative to how frequently this will be reassessed?
See if the assessor is available to answer.
Is the assessor here at the meeting?
Yes, she's in the back, okay.
She's in the back, great. We'll ask the town assessor to respond to that. Thank you, Ms. Stanley, are you a resident of Charlton? Would you state your name and address, please?
Kathleen Stanley, 2 Potter Village Road.
Thank you.
I am the Director of Assessors. So, and, and the TIF to comply with mass general law, it's outlined that we'll revalue the facility every three years. So the initial valuation is 215 million, and that was worked out with a third-party appraiser that worked with us to do the appraisal, and then every three years, it'll be redone at Amazon's expense.
Okay, so, just so everyone heard that, it was originally valued at 215 million.
That's just for the real estate.
For the real estate, and it will be reevaluated every three years for its, its valuation.
Yeah, and that's detailed out in the TIF. And then additionally, just to speak to what was asked before-
Can you speak closer to the microphone, please?
Yes, certainly. It's louder when you're here, so you don't realize it's loud.
I really can't hear you.
So, to speak to someone that said that if Amazon were to go out of business, what would happen, is the facility would still be there, it would still be built, so there would still be tax revenue. Someone else might move into the facility, but taxes would still be generated if Amazon somehow went out of business and left it. They would be leaving a building, so that building would still generate revenue, it would still generate taxes.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
That makes sense. Is there anything further to be said on this matter?
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Borowski.
Just to give the folks a chance, I'd like to make a motion to move the question.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move the question. All in favor of moving the question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Stephen.
Okay, great. All right, that, that motion carries, so we will move the question. So the motion as presented and as detailed in the warrant, under Article 11, is what we're now voting on. So if you are in favor of proceeding with the TIF, please press the green button. If you're opposed to proceeding with the TIF, please press the red button. So the moderator has to call the vote. There are 269 in the affirmative, 86 in the negative. The motion carries, and I would ask that you please remain in your seats for Article 12, so we can continue the meeting. Article 12, a zone change on map 40, Block A, Lot 1.1, agricultural to community business. Please, please stop talking. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning map, Section 200.3.1B, by making the following changes. Change assessor's parcels 40-A-1.1, consisting of a total 2.2 acres, plus or minus, currently zoned agriculture to community business. The zone change is on the attached map, or take any action relative thereto or thereon. Do we have a motion? Mr. Meskis.
Curtis Meskis, 72 H-Foot Road, I move that we accept Article 12 as printed.
Thank you, we have a motion to approve Article 12 as written. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there anything to be said on this matter? And I'd ask for the recommendation of the planning board first. Do we have a representative of the planning board?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Yes, John Smith, planning board member.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Yes, yes, Stephen, yes. On the meeting, on October 27th, the planning board voted on a four to one with one abstention to support the motion of the proposed zoning change stated in Article 12.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Madam Moderator, Adam Struzala, 194 Berlin Game Road. I have a question about the community business, is there any sort of an idea of what sort of community business this is?
Yes, I would ask if the property owner is available to speak to that?
Hi, Madam Moderator.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Hi, Madam Moderator.
Yes, sir.
My name is Chris Scott, I live on Boucher Drive in Charlton.
Can you, can you pick up the mic?
I live on Boucher Drive in Charlton.
Thank you.
Sorry. I would just like to point out first that the map that was submitted with this application is not the maps that were put out tonight. They do not properly show the zoning of the neighborhood, surrounding neighborhood. As far as the community business that is going to be proposed to go in there, I'm the owner of Scott's Siding and Remodeling. We've been run out of this town since 1979, and it's a proposed office building for us.
Okay, so it's Scott's Remodeling?
Scott's Siding and-
Scott's Siding and Remodeling, a business from town that's proposing to build its offices here. Could you specifically clarify what you mean by the map being incorrect?
So if you look at the current zoning map, on the left-hand side of the map, where it says number zero, Old Worcester Road, that is also, all supposed to be community business. The house lot located to the south of that is all community business, and then the lot located to the west of that is supposed to be all community business. This plan has some in engineering. Who is the engineers who made this plan for me? This is not what I submitted to the town. I have a copy of what I submitted in here, if anyone would like to see it.
Could you submit that to me, please? No, it is, it's on my map here.
Yeah, it looks like it's already, it's there, it says it in fine print on the side, it says zoned community business. Yeah, it says that on the map, yeah.
So just to clarify, on the map that's provided in your packet, and Mr. Scott, I'll give you back your maps. Just to clarify, in the map that is provided in your packet, it shows a yellow highlighted line around the parcel of land that is requesting the zoning change. The parcel to the west, labeled number zero, Worcester Road, it shows the existing zone line for community business along the edge of that parcel, indicating that that parcel is already zoned community business. is already zoned community business. So, just to clarify. So, the question for the article is to amend the zoning map to change the parcel that's highlighted in yellow from agricultural to community business.
Yes, that is correct.
Correct. Thank you.
Yes.
Madam Moderator, just two follow-up questions. Where exactly along Route 20 is this location? I'm having a hard time placing it in my mind.
Sure.
And the other question is...
So, let me answer the first question. As you drive down Route 20, there is a stoplight there at the exit of Old Worcester Road. If you're going too fast, you might be hitting the brakes hard to stop at that light some days. And Carroll Hill Road is on the opposite side of the street, so Old Worcester Road and Carroll Hill, and I believe there's a CrossFit business that's located in that square box at the top of...
Okay, okay.
Yes, yep. And currently, that, that property, is it correct? That property has trees on it now. Is that correct?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I actually, I think that answers my second question as to what exactly is on the property in existence right now.
Trees.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else to be said on this matter?
Yes, Madam Moderator, Steve Coronas, 17 Old Worcester Road Extension.
Mr. Coronas.
If you look at this, I've heard, I'm sorry, Steve Coronas, 17 Old Worcester Road Extension. If you look at the map, and I know the petitioner has pointed out number zero, Worcester Road, as being more of an equivalent, it's already zoned community business. Actually, that's zoned community business, enterprise, I believe. But the lot in question is zoned agriculture. It is more, much more exact to the lot to the right of it, number 18, Old Worcester Road Extension. If you look at the, there are five abutters that wrap this property on three sides. It's the Aruda family, it's the Scott family, the Scott, the...
Can you clarify which abutters you're referring to?
I'm on, if you're looking at the map, and I'm trying to go, I'm trying to, I had it all Xed out, but there were one, two, three, four, five residential properties that wrap this parcel on three sides.
On the other side of Old Worcester Road Extension and on the Route 20?
Correct, and just to the right of it, and, and just to the left of it, on that dangerous curve going down to this.
Yep.
I haven't seen any of your plans on, I was at the planning board meeting, there weren't any plans. We don't know, we heard an office building, we didn't hear anything about, all you had to complete it was a perk test. How many parking spaces? How many trucks? How big is it going to be? Are you going to mow all the trees down? Because that's also a buffer to the, to a residential neighborhood. But you still have five homes that are around it, and quite frankly, and I'll be very honest here, I'm one of them. I'm the one in the bottom right where that funny-looking little beaker-looking...
Thank you.
...shaped thing is. And there's, and there, but there's a dozen homes behind that. And I, I question, this, to me, this really looks strongly like spot zoning, and I think it's a slippery slope. And besides that, it's a, it's a wooded dead-end road that kids ride their bikes on all the time. It's not, I'm just going to wrap it up here because it's, but it's, that lot, you're better off comparing the lot you bought to the lot to the right of it, number 18. Those two lots are identical. It's got nothing to do with the one on the left. The one on the left is, address is Zero Worcester Road. The address of the, of the lot you purchased is Zero Old Worcester Road Extension, which is a residential neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Coronas.
So, if you haven't got, and the one, if you're not going to get a Route 20 cutoff, curb cut, you're, you're going to be dumping a community business traffic onto a residential neighborhood, and I don't think anybody would want that.
Okay, thank you. Would you care to respond, Mr. Scott?
Yes, I would. Thank you. So, the Aruda family that you mentioned on Old Worcester Road, that lot is zoned community business, not residential. Furthermore, yes, on the map, this is, this is placed as Old Worcester Road Extension. That has no bearing on where the driveway is going to be located. The driveway for this property would be located near the Route 20 intersection, across from the other community business zone there. There is no point in having a business on a major intersection on Route 20 to put the driveway on Old Worcester Road Extension. The whole point is for the exposure and the ease of access. And I am one of those houses that you talk about in that neighborhood, too. I have a reason to preserve this neighborhood, too, and to keep it quiet and to keep kids off, keep traffic off of Old Worcester Road. My wife and my kids also walk on that road and ride their bikes down there.
Thank you.
Alicia, I'm sorry. Alicia Jek, 18 Old Worcester Road Extension.
Ms. Jek.
So, thank you. So, while Mr. Scott might have great intentions of having a Route 20 curb cut, I might add that the entire extension is zoned agricultural. And although Mr. Scott might have certain plans and might promise us that he'll only do a Route 20 curb cut, if he were to sell the property, this is a permanent zone change. This is now making it community business. So, once the zone change goes through, he sells the property, someone else comes in, and now by right, they can put something else there. So, I would just like to remind you that zone changes are permanent. We're not changing the zoning for Mr. Scott. We're changing the zoning permanently. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just clarify that what I heard was that there will not be a curb cut on Route 20. Is that correct?
That is not accurate. I have not had an answer for or against a curb cut on Route 20. With initial conversation, I'm told it is a high possibility, because there is a set of lights there. The set of lights allows the flow of traffic to slow down for a right-in and a right-out to have people safely enter and exit the building.
Okay.
Just like CVS.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator, if I have one more comment?
Mr. Coronas.
And I'll be quick.
Yes.
Basically, Mr. Scott, you purchased a house lot, a residential house lot. So, whether you do anything with the property or not, you're going to see an increase in the value of the property if this zoning passes. And I'm all for, that's fine. But in this particular case, you're doing it on the backs of all the abutters that live in that neighborhood, and I just want everyone to be aware of that. Your property will go up, ours will go down. And I don't know that, I think that's a very slippery, dangerous slope. Almost leaves a foul taste in my mouth for a town to...
Thank you, Mr. Coronas.
Thank you.
All right, sir?
Mike Mitchell, 194 Berlin Game Road.
Mr. Mitchell.
I would just like to make the comment that if we are going to be for developing Charlton for business, small business is the best type, and it, no matter what moves in there, they have incentive to put the driveway on the highway side. No business in their right mind is going to be putting a driveway on a back road in the back of their place, when no one's going to bother doing that. So, I don't think that's a legitimate concern as far as land value goes. Apparently, we're developing this town, so everyone's going to have to expect that land value is going to be going up. I'd prefer small business. I think that's, this is a decent idea, since it is small business, it's already here, expanding what they are doing, so...
Thank you for your comment. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Yes.
Just briefly, my name is Sue Dacey. I live at 49 Sunset Drive.
Ms. Dacey.
This is a Charlton-owned business that's been, it's on its second generation, decades Part of the property sits on Route 20, which, having lived in Charlton almost 30 years, we've talked about making that our economic, making that the Charlton Business District, locating businesses right on 20. We have someone who lives in town who's trying to locate on 20. You can talk about wanting that to be a house lot, be residential. I'm not sure who's going to build a house sitting on Route 20 and then looking out the left side of the property at what looks like a large gravel-sand operation. We want to support small business. It's small business, family-owned. It's on Route 20. I just, I'm in supportive, supporting a family that's been here for decades, working and building and renovating in Charlton.
Thank you for your comments. Yep. Sir?
Fran Maruka, 51 Jones Road. I'd like to suggest that we move to vote.
Moving the question. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of moving the question, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. So, now it is time to vote on Article 12. Those of you in favor of the motion, which, to approve Article 12 as written, please signify by pressing the green button. Those opposed, please press the red button. Please wait for the vote to be announced. 10 seconds. 200 in the affirmative, 55 in the negative. Happy Thanksgiving. Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Meskis.
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
All in favor of adjournment? Thank you. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Good night.